So we are going to go ahead and get started. Just so we can start on time and end on time tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming to the town hall meeting. We're going to be talking about special education in section 504 programming. I am Stephen Fusco with Advocacy Denver. I am excited to be here tonight in collaboration with Denver Public Schools. There are a number of people who are online as well, who are going to be helping on the chat room side of things. But we are really excited to take this opportunity both to talk about where we are, what's been working, and also to just hear your feedback in terms of what are some of the issues that are still arising for you? We will try and intersperse questions throughout the presentation to the extent we can, but please know at the end, we have a bulk of questions that we already have heard from individuals in the community. And then we will also hopefully have an opportunity to take some of those questions that are coming out of the chat room. So as I mentioned, I'm Stephen Fusco. I'm with Advocacy Denver. I'm an educational advocate and I'm also a pro bono attorney with the Center for Special Education Law. My little caveat that I always give in disclaimer, so I stay in compliance with the state bar, is that you should not take anything that I say tonight as legal advice. You should be sure to consult with an attorney if you have any legal questions regarding the information that you hear. And I also want to make sure that everybody understands that we're really focused tonight on making sure that families understand what the landscape looks like for special education services in section 504 during the COVID crisis. Nothing that we're presenting tonight is in relationship to general DPS policies regarding students with special needs, although it's certainly part of the process the district looked at when coming up with their policies. But this is really tailored towards the COVID crisis. So Pam will be behind the scenes. She's the executive director for Advocacy Denver as well. So she's going to be your first point of contact if you're in the chat rooms to hopefully answer some of your questions. And then you can see we have all of the senior managers who are on the call from Student Equity and Opportunity, as well as Jessica, who is with FACE. And with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Jessica so she can share some of our virtual norms for tonight.
Thanks, Stephen. So our first norm tonight is seek to understand through listening and questioning. As Stephen said, we'll be utilizing the chat throughout this presentation. So you should see the icon at the bottom of your screen. We do ask that there are no side conversations on this chat. And we just also want to remind everyone that because this is a public forum, that we do not put specific information about your child into the chat. The second norm we have up here is presuming positive intent. We know that this is a confusing time for everyone and we are all in this together. And so just presuming that positive intent for one another. We want to start on time and end on time. We want to respect everyone's time tonight, knowing that it's the evening, everyone. A lot of people are home with their children, so we will end at eight o'clock. And lastly, no live questions. So just another reminder to utilize that chat. And another reminder that we may not be able to answer all the questions on the chat. So we will be collecting all of the information and follow up with more guidance if that is the case.
So our agenda for tonight, there are four different areas that we're going to cover. The first is we're really going to talk about the health and wellbeing of our DPS community, both the parents, guardians, our students. I know that there's a lot of staff who are on as well. And we're really going to take this opportunity to really talk about what's important for each of you. The second thing that we're going to be focused on is the virtual learning environment and talking about navigating the new normal. So what does this look like for all of you? Then we're going to shift gears a little bit and we're going to talk through some of the themes that we've seen through questions that we received for those individuals who registered ahead of time. We received a lot of feedback on the Google form. Last night, we had this town hall for middle and high school students and we received some feedback there. And then also just as an advocacy agency, we receive feedback from all of the individuals that we represent, as well as the district as leaders. They have received feedback as well regarding some of your concerns. And then in the final part, as I mentioned, we'll have an opportunity to take some questions that are, again, general in nature. We really encourage everyone, and you'll hear this multiple times throughout the night. We understand this is a difficult time for everybody. There is a lot of uncertainty. People are anxious, anxiety is high. And we really want to make sure that people understand there's a wealth of information out there. You should always be sure to reach out to your building leaders. You start with your caseworkers. You can start with your classroom teachers, your homeroom teachers, to really start that conversation and let them know. If you can't get the answers you need from there, you should feel free to reach out to your building level administrators. And then from there, you can reach out to agencies like ourselves, Advocacy Denver. Or if you're outside the Denver area, we can point you towards other agencies as well who might be able to help. So the first thing we're going to talk about is actually, we've had about a week and a half to roll it out. And so we're going to talk about some of the things that have been going very well since we had our rollout. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jess.
The first success we want to talk about is that DPS has distributed over 40,000 devices and over 500 hotspots to families in need. We want to point this out as a huge success because in such short notice, all teams were really able to come together during this time and make sure that students had access to the technology they needed. The second success is that DPS distributed about 250,000 meals to families. And that's a lot of meals and a lot of families that needed those. So we really see that as a huge success. And if you need more information on the distribution sites, you can go to the DPS website. So that's www.dpsk12.org. And you'll be able to find the distribution information there.
So as Advocacy Denver, we've had an amazing amount of support and been able to offer support to families in the contingency planning process. Since the district began their contingency planning process, we've been able to walk alongside families to both look at contingency plans. We've also been able to help them as they look at IEPs, evaluations that were already in process. And then most importantly, to figure out how do we meet all of the needs that the families are noticing in this particular time. And so we think that it's very important to highlight that we are able to have an open communication with the district. The district has always been willing to listen to us and listen to those concerns and have an open and flexible conversation about what do we do in this time to make sure that all of the students have what they need to be successful in school. And then finally, as I mentioned, the outreach, collaboration, and volunteerism. Absolutely, in a time of crisis such as we're in right now, it would not be possible to do any of the work that we do without all of our community partners. So not only Denver Public Schools or Advocacy Denver, but Rocky Mountain Human Services and other service agencies who have come together to provide food to families. The Office of Family and Community Engagement also has resources to help individuals and families who are having shelter insecurity and need assistance or need assistance with technology. And those collaborative community partners that are coming together and continuing to come together are important in order for this to be successful in this time. So I do want to take a quick moment. I know everybody is probably on this call wanting in some information, but I really want to make sure that I spend a few moments just talking about taking a moment to pause, breathe, and connect. As an educational advocate, when families call me, the first thing I always will say to them is just to take a breath and let's just have a moment to stop and pause and to really understand what's happening. I know for me, both as a special education teacher, a building leader, and now as an advocate, I find that I can only be successful for the people I work with if I'm calm. So that my clients mirror me, my students mirrored me. And if I can have a moment of calm, then I found that that's the best way for me to achieve the best results that everyone's looking for. I will note, it's not easy in these times. I would never be perfect in this area and there's always room for opportunity. But it's a very small thing that I want to make sure that I highlight for everybody. It's a way that we can try and connect together and look at the situation to make sure that we're doing what's best for everybody. And so with that in mind, I wanted to spend a little bit of time at the beginning to really focus on our families and our communities in terms of talking about putting on your own mask first. So it probably feels a little weird right now considering we can't get on airplanes and we're not hearing that message that we always hear. But it is that you should put on your own mask first before putting on a mask to help a child or an infant. And so I wanted to offer just some practical pointers that I have heard parents tell me over the years. There are things that I used when I was in the classroom. There are things that I use as an advocate. And even as a lawyer, when I'm in a courtroom or when I'm with a client and we're trying to discuss difficult issues, things that help calm everybody down and really be able to focus on the problems. So the first thing is to make sure you take some self-care time. I would say probably today I didn't get an A+ in that area for myself. But there's lots of small things you can do, medium and big things. A small thing is taking those breaths. Just a couple of deep breaths when you're about to go into a difficult situation. When you're at your wits' end and you know you're about to say something. When you're struggling to figure out what you're going to do for food, for shelter, and those things. It's taking that time to really take care of yourself and make sure that you have what you need to be able to address those problems. If you have the luxury, which I know most people don't, meditation, journaling. I even listen to a 20-minute podcast just to give myself something positive to reframe my thoughts. Brene Brown is one that comes to mind that I routinely listen to. That she helps frame my thoughts so that I can then be helpful to others. The second thing is to make sure you ask for help. And we were just talking this morning as a group of how important it is right now that we need to have open communication. And we need to know what the struggles are. We need to know what the successes are. And we need to know who needs help. With a district this large, even as an advocacy organization, we have a large number of clients that we serve. We often don't know that our clients need help, that our families need help, that our kids need help. And that's not to say that it's the responsibility of the parent to be the one to do it. But the only way we're going to be able to provide that information and assistance is to really know what's going on. And so going back to what Jess said and what I mentioned earlier, please feel comfortable saying, "I'm lost. I don't understand what's happening. I don't understand how to log my student on." Or even more significantly, "I need food. I can't get out of my home. Is there someone who can go pick up meals? How do I get internet access? I don't have internet." Or we also have a program to help with families as far as rental issues go and things like that. So please feel comfortable being vulnerable and asking for that help. Third is to recognize your feelings. I taught in a residential treatment facility for four years. And probably the number one thing I taught all of my students was to be able to identify what they were feeling and tell me what they were feeling so that I could offer help. It was also important to recognize feelings so that we each collectively knew what we could do in that particular situation. If I was stressed out, if I was anxious, I couldn't be productive with my students. If my students were dysregulated, I couldn't get them to engage in material. And right now, it's important to just have a check-in point. Where are you in your day? I was on a call a couple of days ago with a school leader that at the beginning of the morning at nine o'clock, they have a check-in. And it's just, "How are you? How was your previous day? How was your weekend?" And believe it or not, you learn a ton of information in that moment. And so if you ask your kiddos, "How was your day? How did it go?", you're going to get a lot of information and then you can use that to ask for help. The fourth thing is to prioritize. I know all of us are at varying degrees struggling with prioritizing all of the demands that go along with being in a home without being able to go out, without figuring out childcare or work situations or more basic needs. And it's important to prioritize. It's also important to prioritize for our students and to pick our battles. So I was talking to a parent the other day and said, "You know, if your son is struggling, maybe you don't start with the reading, which is really difficult for him first thing in the morning. Maybe you can lead in with math, which is his strength, and then you can get to reading a little bit later in the day." In another family, I was talking about the idea that maybe you don't get the whole lesson done. It's been amazing to me to talk to school leaders, to talk to principals, to talk to teachers, social workers, providers. The expectation is not that students are going to get this perfect. And it is certainly not the expectation that students should feel the pressure that they have to be perfect, that they have to meet these high demands, and they have to be able to be perfect in this environment. If anything, I've heard nothing but flexibility. And we want to make sure that we prioritize that we do need to be flexible and to pick our battles wisely when we're talking about programming. We're just talking about basic needs. Number five is to disconnect. And that can look so many different ways. I've noticed that I have Zoom meetings all day. And I've now started to have to build into my day a time when I'm not in front of my screen. I'm not checking my emails. It can be as simple as I sometimes play a game on my phone. I could watch a little bit of TV. I can go for a walk. But that disconnect time is important because scientifically it's been proven we can only sit for so long and get information and get information the way we are. I also think it's really valuable to make sure there is a space outside of the learning environment where kids can be kids. So if they have a little space, it's their desk and it's their computer area, and that's where they're doing schoolwork. Finding a space, if you can, where they can go away from that environment to just have that downtime is important for them. And it's just as important for the families who are helping those kids. And then finally, I think it's important to remember to let go of control. There's very little in this world that at the end of the day, we'll all look back and this has been a struggle and we'll realize we didn't have control over a lot of things. And the important thing is to figure out what we do have control over. We do have control over ourselves and our reactions and how we handle the situation. And I've seen nothing but grace in everyone rising to the occasion currently in dealing with this situation. And the best way to do it is just to recognize that we don't have control over everything, but we can control how we react to the situation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle.
Thanks, Stephen. I really appreciate the metaphor that you spoke about on the last slide around really taking care of yourself, putting that mask on yourself first. Because if we're not taking care of ourself, it's really hard to be able to take care of others. So you may be juggling being your child's teacher. You may be juggling being the parent. You may be juggling, "Am I going to continue to keep my job? Am I really struggling with housing and food?" That's a lot of stress that everyone's under right now. And so really wanting to take a step back and say, "You know, this time in our world is changing day by day. We really need to be supportive of each other and really work collaboratively together." So in DPS, we really want to work collaboratively with you as families in order to support your students with disabilities. So as part of the process of moving into remote learning, we really want to make sure that we are providing a variety of different digital and non-digital materials and instructional activities to maintain that academic growth of our children. We're looking at providing those supports all the way from our ECE, all the way through our 18 to 21 program. We want to make sure our English language learners, their needs are being met. And we want to make sure that our little ECE kiddos, their needs are being met. And so in order to do that, we have to kind of take a step back and really look at what do our teachers need in order to do what's best for our students? So as part of this process of moving into remote learning, prior to spring break, we had 3,260 DPS staff attend online training to prepare for remote learning. They jumped in, were very enthusiastic, learning the technology, learning best instructional practices for remote learning, looking at the different options that DPS is offering as far as moving towards what would work best for students and also what's going to work best for staff. We do have many staff that are well-versed with technology. And we also have staff that need a little bit of coaching and support in order to provide good quality online learning. We also want to follow, we also want to support the whole child through cultural responsive education and through that social emotional learning. Because this is a very traumatic time for everyone. It is not the norm. And so we really need to help support our students and our families with really saying, you know, "We have your back. We want to make sure that you're doing okay. And what do you need in order to access your education? And your parents to be able to support that process."
And just really quickly, please feel free to put your questions in the chat. We're going to just keep moving through, but if you do have questions, put them in the chat. There are lots of people who can answer them while we're going.
Thank you, Stephen. So I first want to talk a little bit about the three options. One of the options is really the district provided instructional material with teacher support. We have 1,400 lessons that have been produced in nine days. And so every single week, we are producing more lessons for our teachers to be able to utilize with students. And so those lessons are in reading, in writing, in math, in our arts, in social studies, in science. So we're looking at the continuum across all academic areas. Lessons are available to help build some independence for students to be able to do some work on their own. And then there's also some teacher-directed instruction with option one. Individual teachers can choose between the variety of these options and they can do a combination of these options. So I'm going to move into option number two. Option number two is kind of a hybrid. That is looking at both the more around materials digitally and then also maybe providing some lessons where students can work independently at their own pace and at their own time. So for example, teachers may come in and do a reading lesson, a whole group lesson. And then there may be some instruction for the student to work on in a small group that they're going to be doing independently. And the teacher may check in later in the day to see how they're doing on that small group independent work. So we offered 40 lessons across all of these different areas for teachers to choose. And we had 1,467 teachers across the district. Look at option number two and utilize that as part of their remote learning opportunities for students. Then we have our option number three. Option number three is really that full digital instruction. Typically, schools who are those MyTech schools or the one-to-one device schools where they're utilizing Schoology, Google Classroom already within the school, they have taken that and integrated that into this remote learning environment. We have ed partners who are here to support each region directly with that, to support with instruction. We had 35 lessons already offered for option number three, already ready to go when we started. And we have 370 teachers across the district that are currently using option three. So a lot of our full MyTech one-to-one schools are utilizing those Google classrooms and the Schoology. We also have teachers that are using a variety of option one, option two, and option three based on the needs of students. Some students may be struggling with accessing technology. And so maybe they do need some paper pencil tasks. And that material is being mailed home to them so they can access that. And then students will be able to mail that back to the teachers. The next section we want to go to is really why we're here tonight is really looking at how we're serving our most vulnerable students. When we're serving our most vulnerable students, I want to think again around our students identified with disabilities. And so what are we doing to support our most vulnerable students? We're continued in DP, we're really committed to DPS. We have over 10,000 students who are currently on IEPs, 504s. We are really looking at how can we provide remote learning services that is really supporting the IEP to the greatest extent possible? We really are collaborating with Advocacy Denver and our partners around setting up webinars, informational sessions, so that we can hear the concerns from our families to be able to then problem solve on how we can best support you as families and as students. We have our multiple trainings that we have offered to our staff. And we have different teams that are supporting a variety of learners. So we have our deaf and hard of hearing, visual impairment teams, our preschool, early education teams, our 18 to 21 programs, our center-based teams, our specialty teams who focus on autism, affective needs, specific learning disability. They are all working with our teachers on how we are going to support students' IEPs to the greatest extent possible in this remote learning environment. So on that, I'm going to pass that to you, Stephen.
Sure. So we really wanted to take a look, and this is the point, probably everyone's like, "I've been waiting for this point to come tonight." So we have, as I mentioned before, for those individuals who registered online, we asked you to include any specific questions that you might have had related to where the district is currently with providing services to individuals with disabilities, whether it's through an IEP or section 504 plan. We've also had Advocacy Denver, as I mentioned. We have been working with a lot of families through the contingency planning process, through the IEP process, and through the evaluation process as part of the way we have gone online with virtual learning. As well as Denver Public Schools, the senior managers who are on the call, and Jessica, who is with FACE, they have, we've collectively come together and identified four major themes that we noted that people wanted to know information about. And the first is really about contingency plans. What are the contingency plans? I don't understand how they're being implemented. I don't understand what they are. Do they take the place of an IEP? And so really, we're going to talk a little bit through those contingency plans and what they're designed to do. The second theme is around social emotional supports. And really, for our families that have kids with significant emotional and behavioral issues and they're really struggling to provide those mental health supports or figure out what to do with their children in this time, we want to really be able to address some of those concerns for you and help give you some pointers or some things that you can think about as you navigate this new time when you might have your child home all day and you don't have those service providers that you once did. The third thing is looking at how is the district handling evaluations and IEPs, section 504 plans, and those transition plans from elementary to middle, middle to high, or perhaps even high school to the 18 to the 21 transition program. And we'll talk through what that looks like right now. And then finally is around technology. As Jess mentioned at the beginning, technology has been rolling out. We have heard concerns from some community members about technology. And so we not only wanted to talk about where we are or where the district is with that, but then also some resources that you can go to if you have those technology questions and what you need to do as far as technology is concerned.
So next, I want to talk a little bit about what is this contingency plan that we're talking about? And so you may or may not have had an opportunity yet to discuss with your child's special education case manager around how the remote learning is going for your child. And so what we're doing is we're setting up contingency plans that describe how your child's IEP will be implemented during this remote learning time. As you know, during remote learning time, we may not be able to implement all of your child's IEP services and goals. For example, if your child is receiving direct services from a physical therapist because they're working on mobility issues, that would be difficult to do within a remote learning environment. But what can happen is that physical therapists may be consulting with But what can happen is that physical therapists may be consulting with you as a parent to say, here's some specific activities that you can do and exercises that you can do that will help build and enhance and working on that child's goal. So part of this contingency plan is really looking at your child's current special education goals. Which of those goals that can be worked on during remote learning? If they can't be worked on during remote learning, why can't they be? If they can, then how is that goal is going to be serviced remotely? Maybe that the service provider is going to be doing a direct lesson with your child on self determination. So then they were going to be providing 30 minutes during that day, working on specifically that goal. Then how are they going to progress monitor? That's really when they're going to need your support. So they're going to want to talk to you a little bit about how your child is doing on that goal. They may be asking you questions around, are they able to engage for a certain amount of time? Are they able to utilize that skill with you in the home setting? Then we look at what kind of accommodations are currently being provided on your child's IEP? And what assistive technology is included in your child's IEP? What are some of those things that you can provide at home in this remote learning environment as part of an accommodation? For example, if your child has, needs different movement breaks, then perhaps the special education teacher can work with you to set up a schedule of what those movement breaks may look like during the day so that they can help increase their engagement when there is some direct instructional time. Perhaps if there's some assistive technology that your child may need, that they need to be able to access on their Chromebook. So do they need to have rewrite access on their Chromebook? Speech to text, do they need to have a C Pen that can read through that piece of instructional material so that they understand that? And then what's really important is what is that weekly schedule going to look like? This contingency plan is developed in conjunction with you. Because again, what that child needs may be different at home than what it's going to look like at school. For example, if they need to have opportunities where Stephen had said, maybe they're only doing reading. If it's challenging for them, they're going to do that in the afternoon when they've had a little bit of break and they've had a little bit of time in the morning focusing on their strengths. That schedule is what you're going to be working on with your child's special education case manager. And remember, this is a plan. We're doing this plan to the greatest extent possible. If it's not working for you, if it's not working for your child, what you should do is ask your special education case manager, let's get together again. Let's talk about what's not working. What can we do to help support your child to be successful during this remote learning plan time?
And I just wanted to add some things that I noticed from the advocacy perspective, some questions I'm getting. As Michelle pointed out, this is not a replacement to a student's IEP. So parents are asking me, does this mean that this is an IEP meeting? Does this mean we're changing the IEP? And I think it's really important to remember that the contingency plan is how is the district going to provide the services and meet the students' needs that are identified in the IEP or maybe a 504 Plan? And what are they going to do to meet that need? So it's not taking the place, it doesn't change the IEP, but really is, we're in an environment that's different than we were in when we had the IEP and how are we going to meet that need? And there's a couple of things that I want to make sure people, the families know about. The first is, as Michelle pointed out, you can see on the screen where it talks about the weekly service schedule. That's a really important place on the contingency plan to really see where are their service minutes going to come from? So who's going to be reaching out? Who's going to be working with your child? Who's going to actually be implementing and working towards those goals? And that really is a good place to go. In fact, when I look at a contingency plan, it's all important. That's really what helps me see what the district is going to be doing to supply those services that are identified in the IEP. I also want to make sure that families understand that, as Michelle pointed out earlier, there's three different learning environments that are going on in the virtual world. And each school is making decisions and they're tailoring their particular school community to meet them. But those are separate from the services that might be provided in the contingency plan. The other day I had a parent who said, I don't understand the schedule for the day. Like, I don't know when my child is supposed to be online and when they're supposed to be offline and what's going on throughout the day. And it was a situation where there's, on the homepage for the school, there's the master schedule for the day, which really outlines the full day. And then the contingency plan is really focused on what services are going to be provided for each particular child on an individualized basis to meet their IEP goals. And so to the extent that you have confusion about what's the schedule and what does it look like? I really encourage you to reach out to the case manager, to your student's teacher, to even a building leader and say, I don't understand what this day is supposed to look like. My child is only doing 30 minutes of work a day. In all likelihood, there's probably more work built into that day. A practical pointer I've been giving parents is, tell the caseworker you'd like to have a 10 minute check in. It can be once a week. If you want it more frequently, that's fantastic. But it gives you an opportunity as a parent, as a guardian, as a caretaker to know, what are they supposed to be doing? One family got feedback and they were like, oh, they're not doing any of those things they're supposed to be doing. And they were able to get that feedback by having that communication. Again, it doesn't need to be every day, but it should be a level of comfort where you say, I don't know what's going on and I'd like to reach out and find out. And I have not met a single person who has said, no, I don't have time for that. It can be through the office hours that they have, or they've been making telephone calls or sending an email or something so that you really know what's going on. And then the final thing is, I've been impressed both as an advocate working with the district and the district in a proactive way, the flexibility that Michelle mentioned earlier, which is if something's not working, please let somebody know. It can be your advocate, it can just be calling the school. But there is a joy, if we can say that in this environment, that there's a lot of flexibility with how we program education right now. So I wanted to just talk a little bit with you about mental health services. In my work as an advocate, I would say that I spend about 60 to 70% of my time working with kids with emotional issues and really helping families figure out how to navigate a situation where they have a child that has significant emotional and behavioral issues. Most of my families, right now, some of them are struggling to figure out, what do I do? I've got a kiddo. I can't even keep him in their seat right now, let alone keep them on a screen for four or five hours, or even an hour for that matter. And so there are a couple of things that I would really encourage everybody to do. The first is to go back to that contingency plan and look to see where those mental health service minutes are discussed. It could be that the contingency plan called for a service provider, having one on one time with a particular student. They're all going to be different, so that's not guaranteed in every one of them. It could be that built into small group lessons is a social emotional component. I had a school where the center based program at nine o'clock in the morning has a morning block where they do check ins regarding emotions. Then they have a theme for the day and then they integrate that theme for the day, usually around social emotional skills into the lessons. And so that's another opportunity where it might be embedded into the lesson. Additionally, if you are struggling at home, please reach out to your caseworkers into the school and let them know that you are struggling to find those services that you need. We had a town hall last evening for middle, high school students and someone asked a question, anxiety is much higher now. What can we do in this environment? My child had anxiety to begin with and with the COVID crisis, their anxiety is much higher. And I pointed out, please let the school know, please let the teachers know, please let, if you have an advocate you're working with know, and really work and see what can we build into that contingency plan to really address those emotional issues? If those issues can't be addressed in the contingency plan, or you really feel like my kiddo is really struggling, we tried everything we could, there is absolutely nothing that can stop the IEP team from coming back together and really looking at what are the particular needs for a student. And so I don't want anybody to walk away thinking the contingency plan means that there's no other services available or that I can't have an IEP meeting or nobody wants to have an IEP meeting and hear me. It can be that there's flexibility that can be built in and the team can come back together and look at an IEP. And then last but not least, as I mentioned at the beginning, those community providers. Rocky Mountain Human Services is an excellent organization and there are others out there. If you're in the Denver School District, you can reach out to Advocacy Denver and we can point you towards some of those mental health services. I'll be honest with you, I've seen some great things being done online. I know of another school district, one of the social workers has actually posted all of their YouTube videos that are social emotional based and SEL, social emotional learning based. It's got songs, he's playing the guitar, it's geared towards elementary school students. Sesame Street, I was commenting on, I know people might laugh at that. Sesame Street, in my opinion, I grew up on it, is a great resource to teach people about fear, anxiety. They've gone virtual, everyone's on Zoom and they're talking about everything right now.
Thank you, Stephen. So wanted to reassure families that IEP meetings are still being conducted. We are still doing evaluations to the greatest extent possible, that we're able to complete those evaluations. We're still looking at having 504 meetings. We're still planning for kids as they transition from one school grade level to the next. So example, from middle school to high school, elementary to middle school. So those timelines have remained unchanged. And so school providers are going to be reaching out to you if your child is due for an evaluation or an annual IEP meeting or is transitioning. They're going to be reaching out to you to set up those meetings so we can develop quality of IEPs. As part of this process of doing evaluations, we may need to think outside the box. Because of the fact that we're in this remote learning environment, we may have some evaluations, some assessments that we're not able to conduct in this remote learning environment. We need that in-person learning. For example, if a child may need a cognitive assessment, that is something that's going to have to be done in person. So when we look at that, we need to think about how much of these assessments can we do in this remote learning environment? Of the ones that we can't do, are those necessary in order for the IEP team to determine eligibility? And then if at the last resort, if they need to be delayed until in-person learning, then that's something that the team is going to discuss. But to the greatest extent possible, we are moving forward with all of our IEP evaluations and meetings. If you have any questions regarding those IEP meetings, please reach out to your child's case manager. They will be able to share additional information specific to your child. And Jess, if you want to share a little bit about our technology pieces below.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. So I mentioned earlier that we look at the numbers of tech distributions as a huge success. But with that, like anything else, we understand that there's also been a lot of questions and concerns for some families. So provided here is just some additional information regarding the distribution. What I think is really important here that I just want to take a minute to go over are the resources and numbers below that you can use as a resource for the questions that you may have. So any questions regarding a tech distribution time or location, you can reach out to the family and community helpline. That number is 720-423-3054. And that'll be on the next slide as well. If you have questions regarding Google classroom and broken devices, hotspots, you can reach out to the DPS dot student line. That number 720-423-3163. And both the family and community helpline and the dot student helpline offer bilingual services in Spanish. And we can utilize interpretation services to support communication in any other languages.
Great. So this is the time when we're going to open it up to some questions. I have two questions that I'm going to try to address from an advocacy angle. And then if anybody on the other end, we'll also see if there's any additional information that we can share on that. The first question is, how can we be sure our child is ready for the next level? That is a wonderful question. I also think that question is a relevant question, whether we're in a virtual learning world or we're in a classroom setting. So when I think about being ready for the next level, I really have to think about what does my child need? And then what does the child currently have and what programming do we have in place going forward? The good thing that we can say at this time is that we did have over a semester of time to see how students were doing and what progress they are making. And while we have had an opportunity where we're now in a virtual learning environment, there is still good data that's out there that showed how a student was doing and progress that a student was making. And so I think that's the first thing I would look at is, prior to us going to this environment, what did we have in terms of progress made? The second thing I would say is that the district is using online resources such as iXL and other online programs, iReady and things like that, to actually progress monitor and to be able to see what progress is making, what progress a student is making. I will tell you, that's not going to tell you everything for every student. Some students don't engage with the online learning environment. That's just a reality. That reality existed whether we were in a virtual world or we were in a live world. The third thing I would say, and this is especially applicable for elementary, is that there are a lot of assessments and a lot of tools that teachers can use, especially in the reading area, that are face to face and don't require human interaction. So there's a lot of, we call them probes, what educators call them. But there are things where a teacher sits down and there might be a text on the screen and they might say, read this text to me. And we're counting, how many words is the student reading? And so that's what we call fluency. So how many words can a student read correctly in a minute? It could be that maybe a student hears a passage if they have difficulty with reading and you ask them literal questions. What was that passage about? What season was it? Where did the family go at the end? Those are literal comprehension questions. So there are a lot of strategies you can use to be able to tell how a student is doing that aren't necessarily based on paper assessments that we've used to be giving. And one of the things that I think is why I got into this profession is it's amazing at the creativity and the amount of information you can get by just having conversations, just listening to students and just looking at their work. So I think it's an evolving process. I think it's still going to be a conversation. And I don't think anybody who is on this webinar would say that it's perfect. It doesn't look like the school environment. But to Michelle's point earlier, we have to think outside the box and say, okay, we can't do it the way we used to. How can we do it? And those couple of strategies I had are some ways I think you can determine how a student is doing. Is there anything you would like to add, Michelle, or think of?
No, that's great. I guess, you know, I understand with you really thinking about what are some thinking outside the box of how our children are progressing? Again, we've had a good chunk of school already this year to really know how our students are doing. And so in this remote learning environment, it may look a little different. But we really are focusing on what is the progress of the children? How are they making on their goals and objectives? How are they doing on accessing the curriculum?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a second question in relation to summer programming. From an advocate perspective, as I look at summer programming, I look at it the same way I would look at any of the issues that are arising with IEPs, evaluations, contingency plans. I think it's a question of what programming is needed to meet the students' needs, given the unique environment that we given the unique environment that we exist in. Summer programming will not look like what it looks like were we not in this virtual environment. It's also very important to go back to the IEP. So I think this question might relate to ESY or Extended School Year. ESY is something that you would think about in relationship to the particular situation as the IEP called for it. So some decisions may have already been made about ESY. And I would say it's important to go back and consult with the IEP first. Then, if you still have additional questions regarding summer programming, I would reach out to your school leaders, caseworkers, and have that conversation about summer programming.
And please also refer to Parent Portal. We are updating resources for parents every single day as remote learning is evolving from day to day and what the restrictions are. Summer programming may shift and it may look different, but we have no decisions made on that yet. But those decisions will be posted for you to be able to see. Then we can work with you on what that's going to look like for your child.
Those were the only questions I had. If there are any other questions that are in the chat room, please go ahead and put those questions in there. I'm just going to hold for a minute or two, just so everyone understands the virtual world. Michelle and I have a point of contact, they're sending us a question. Put it in the chat room and they will get it to us then to be able to respond to. But I'm going to let everyone take a minute or two, if you have some questions that they could send to us. Well, I don't have any more questions on my end. Michelle, did you get anything else?
There is a question from a parent that has children who have autism, and she's really having a hard time with all of this, really thinking about how our students feel like maybe that their students are being passed on from one grade to the next during this remote learning time. And so generally speaking, thinking about these specific questions that you have, really would look at, how is the school supporting the grading of students during this remote learning time? There are resources on the Parent Portal section that talks about what grading is going to look like during this time. And so the goal is to make sure that students have skills in order to move on.
And I'll speak at it, remember, I'm Advocacy Denver, so I'm going to speak at it through my lens. If you look at it across the country, your question is vital. I think parents across the country are asking this question right now. And there is no answer in terms of what's the right answer. I can tell you though, in Memphis, for example, seniors are no longer going to school. The district has made a decision that they're just going to, that they're done with their senior year. Other schools are making different decisions. And I just want to say that I understand your question and I do think that schools are being very thoughtful and being very deliberate about thinking about, what is fair for our students who are in an environment that is new? And how do we really decide on what it means in terms of education right now? And your question is absolutely a great question in terms of, what do we do and what's the response? And I would just point out that across the country, I think that's a question that's being asked. And overall, what we are seeing is that every district is being absolutely thoughtful, understanding and caring about the concept that kids are scared, kids are not used to this environment, some kids don't learn in this environment. And how do we be equitable for all students to be successful, given this unique learning environment? Well, with that then, we will thank you guys so much for being here. Again, this will, we have this will be posted if you know individuals who might have additional questions. And as well, we thank everybody for their time. Oh, actually, I apologize, I went too fast. Hold on one second. Thank you. So I'm going to turn this back over to Jess.
Do you want to present your screen?
Hold on one second, sorry guys, technology.
I can go ahead and start. The information on here is the Family and Community Engagement Helpline number. We've said it earlier, and I'll say it again, that we really all are in this together. And we want to ensure that everyone has a place to go if you have questions or concerns. And this is one resource that is available to families. It's the Family and Community Helpline. It's the Family Constituency Team. They're on the phones from 7:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. daily. The number is there, the 720-423-3054. And if you prefer to email us, you can email us with the email spacehelpline@dpsk12.org. So we're there to answer your questions, concerns, connect you to the right people. Give us a call between 7:30 and 5:00 and we will answer.
And then from my end, so Advocacy Denver, we are absolutely here for you for families in the Denver public school system. We also have sister chapters that help in other school districts. Our work is the Denver Public School System. But you will see that there are virtual drop-in hours that you can literally just go on, click on that link, and you will, the Advocate's Calendar will come up and you can schedule a drop-in time to talk to an advocate in our office. You can also call our referral line, and the number is provided there. And then the last one is that Pam and I both have provided our email